Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Call the meeting to order and note that every member of the town council is present. Town manager Cliff Gravier is also present, assistant town manager Terry Teeman, town clerk Chris Ray, and Brian Pennusit, who is our IT person today. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Still moved.
Second. Okay, the only thing I'd like to do is I'd like to reverse the items for A and B about the ambulance agreement and just put B as first and then do A because I think that's more, makes more sense. So with that, can I ask for, do we, everybody, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 17th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Any changes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is the approval of the financial report. Mr. Morris.
You've moved me up. This report covers the budget through December 31st, 2023. We are seventy-five percent through the year 2024. To date, we have collected ninety-seven point four of our budget compared to one hundred and seven percent, one hundred point seven percent last year. Property taxes, real estate act taxes, licenses and permits and parking meters are all at or above budget. Rental tax and traffic tickets and investment income are slightly below budget. We expect the revenue to exceed the budget this year. On the expense side, we have operating expenses as expected. We have exceeded seventy-nine point three percent of our budget compared to seventy-nine point seven last year. Recognizing that this report is subject to audit, I respectfully move that the council accept and approve this unaudited report.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is the approval of the tax adjustment list number three. Mr. Morris.
Counsel, you have a copy of the tax adjustment list number three for fiscal year 2024. There are twenty-four properties listed. These adjustments are a result of new construction, an addition, or remodeling of the properties. I make a motion that we accept the list as presented.
Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is announcement recognition of visitors, public comment. I have an announcement. Yeah, this thing needs some oil. It's getting old and creaky like me. Okay, we received this week a letter from Governor Carney certifying our 2023 Bethany Beach Comprehensive Plan. So I will, what the certification means or signifies is that the submitted comprehension plan complies with the requirements of Title 22, Section 702 of the Delaware Code, and I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And the Office of State Planning Coordination has applied all aspects of the Comprehensive Plan Review Process, evaluated the components of the plan, and provided a recommendation regarding the status, and they recommended that it be approved. So I just wanted to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for all the work they put in on this and also Scott Edmondson, who was part of that, the commission at that time, and also part of the council, and also all the staff, Mr. Gravier, Mrs. Teeman, and all the Bethany Beach Town staff, the office directors who did so much work on this, and the town council who did a lot, a great deal of work on this. It's finally been approved, and so I just wanted to congratulate you now we have to implement it. Twenty twenty-three to twenty, what's it, twenty thirty-two or twenty thirty?
Sometimes it changes.
Yeah, it'll be a long time. Okay, so anyway, I just wanted to say that and to congratulate everybody and thank you all for all your hard work. Okay, does anybody else on council have anything? Okay, anybody in the audience, anybody who is here present? Okay. The next, we'll proceed then with the reports, reports from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Boswell.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We had a very light schedule since most of our efforts has been on the ten-year plan for the last several years. We had one item, and it was bringing an item that we did three years ago back to the way it used to be. We had a property that was changed, lot lines were changed to provide a little extra for one lot, one pond road, and a little less for the next door neighbor, because they're not the same people. It subsequently has been sold, and the purchaser of the second lot wanted to go back to the way it was. So now we have two lots back to the way it was before. They're the same, and they meet the R1 requirements. Other than that, I would also like to echo my appreciation and thanks to the planning board, the staff, and the town council for the effort that they've put into developing the ten-year plan over the last several years. It's been a long time, and I think the plan itself is very good, and I think it'll stand up very well. And hopefully, for the next people in the Planning and Zoning Commission who work on the update, it'll be, hopefully, a lot easier than it has been. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Any questions for Mr. Boswell?
Not really questions, sir. It was really just for being somebody who was new on the council when that work was going on. I thought it was a really helpful exercise. I learned a lot about the history and sort of our strategic plan going forward. It was a really interesting exercise, so.
Thank you.
There is a lot of helpful and useful information in the comprehensive plan. If anyone wants to understand more about how the town works and what goes on and the history and everything, comprehensive plan is a good document to read, and especially before you go to bed at night. Believe me, we read it many times. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. The next item, historical and cultural affairs report. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, Mr. Hinman and Mrs. Kiel.
Thanks, Brian. Teresa and I will share this. This is really just an update on our most recent meeting we had on January 11th. One of the things we talked about, this is just an idea, but we want to get feedback from the community on how we're doing, how people perceive the situation. This is just an example that was on the National Safety Council they had. But the more important thing is we are going to look at a way to try to get real-time input from people, whether they're residents, guests, or whatever, as we're going through the season and the like. The team, I think, responded pretty well to this as a start point, and we'll refine it and sort of think about how we can do that, get that feedback real time. The other thing I want to do is a recognition, and one of the gentleman is actually sitting here, but one of our key members, Mr. Tim Schweitzer, really gave us a lot of passion and energy, organization skills, and focus. He had to back off the committee because of work responsibilities and work and the like, but just wanted to give him a special recognition for everything he's done with that. Actually, you know what? I pointed out this a little bit, and I didn't realize it until we put the picture up, but if you look in the background, it's one of the most important people in this whole town effort, and that's the leader of the parade committee, right? And you can't really see it, but he's got this really concerned look as he's looking at Tim. You know, I'm like, oh, my goodness. But you see a picture a little bit later, and Bruce has got a smile back, so. So, Tim, again, thank you for everything you've done for our team, and I know you'll be helping us out going forward when you can, so thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
So the next thing I want to highlight is our team, as it's made up, and really try to call attention, the committee or the council in November approved two new members, so that listing is basically the same. Tim's no longer on it, but we've added Mark Cohen and Brad Malkovank. So they've both been really additive to our team already. So I just wanted to give them a special note, and actually, the whole team. This is a very engaged, enthusiastic, enthusiastic, passionate group, so it's a real pleasure for Teresa and I to co-lead this. We did highlight one thing again, just because we had some new members. This just goes back to our charter to get and ground us all in our opportunity to work collaboratively with the council to provide insight and guidance on the whole idea of pedestrian and bicycle safety. So we reviewed that as a team. We shared this before. This is, these are our key focus areas for 2024, and as you can see, we've added a couple of other people, our two new members, or where we've had some folks who have jumped in to help out. So these efforts will be taking fold as we move throughout the year, and you'll hear more about that. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is this idea. One of the items is this learning sharing workshop, and this is what the team came up with at the end of last year and said, you know, it'd be great for us to host something where we can understand and what is going on with other communities in the area. So we decided we'd take that on, and so we're, we have a date. It's going to be on the 21st at 10:00 a.m. We're working right now and inviting our respective beach communities for them to send representatives. But this is really a learning sharing, right? The whole idea is to get best practices, find out what our neighbors are doing, so we can all take away some learning from that. So the way we sort of have got it laid out is we're going to have a kickoff presentation by Deldat for the first half hour. We'll have an opportunity for each community that's present to give us just a brief overview of what they're going to be focusing on as they're moving into 2024. We'll learn from that here from each other. And then we're going to have a presentation by T2, which is actually part of the University of Delaware. Mr. Gravier gave us their information, and we're very enthusiastic about helping us out. They work with towns, municipalities around this whole topic of moving people, bikes, and the like around. And they're actually going to coordinate with Deldat to sort of make sure those presentations are sort of dovetail pretty well. So it'll be, we're really hoping it's a great learning event for the communities. We all can take away some learnings from that, and then we'll have just a brief wrap-up and lunch afterwards. So that's sort of the first thing on the agenda. Teresa, anything else from, from your view?
No, just that, you know, we're excited about this workshop. It's an important topic for everyone who lives on the coast. It's part of the reason we all live here, and we shouldn't be duplicating our efforts. So any information we can share is important.
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mickey. Thank you, Teresa. Anybody have any questions, comments? Anybody here today have any questions or comments from Mr. Hinman or Miss? Okay, very good. Thank you both. That was excellent presentation. The next item on the agenda is the Fourth of July Parade Committee. Mr. Frye.
I'm sorry, I don't have any slides, which I have to go through with my sparkling personality. The parade committee has met twice since the last council meeting. We met on November 30th to brainstorm parade theme and design a parade t-shirt. Possible themes were See the Shore in '24 and Ocean Roar in '24. But since this will be the fortieth anniversary of the parade, the unanimous choice was celebrating forty years of freedom, family, and fun. That'll be on the t-shirt. The committee sketched a shirt design. Julie Malewski will have the printer refine our sketch, confirm pricing. We're going to raise it to six hundred and fifty shirts this year because we did run out last year. More money. And we agreed upon the color will be blue, navy blue. Once again, Ray and Chris Allmiller will direct the t-shirt sales at the usual events leading up to the parade, including the Poseidon Festival, Seashide Craft Show, and bandstand concerts. This morning, we finalized the shirt design and discussed the pros and cons of using a credit card reader in addition to cash, cash and checks for the shirt purchases. We're still talking about that. I was happy to hear from our town director of finance that last year the combined income from t-shirt sales and the Firecracker 5K Run and Walk event completely covered the cost of the parade, so it didn't cost the town anything. We again thank Focus Multi-Sports for running the Firecracker 5K. And hot off the press this morning, we were picking a grand marshal for the parade, and we were hoping that Lou Kilber would accept, and he has accepted, so thank you. Happy to honor you.
Thank you.
Speech or?
I'll save it for the parade.
Our next meeting will be on March 15th at 9:00 a.m., the Ides of March. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frye, and thank you, Mr. Kilmer, for accepting.
Oh, thank you for asking.
The next item is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget and Finance Committee met on Thursday, January 18th to review the third quarter of the current year and to discuss the proposed budget for the year, fiscal year 2025, which will begin on April the 1st. The results of the first quarter of the current year are good. Revenue should exceed the budget by $700,000, mainly due to real estate transfer tax and building permit fees far exceeding expectations. Operating costs are higher than previous years, mainly because of high wages needed to keep staff, replacing the pay stations, replacing computer equipment, mapping for storm and water drainage, and more than unusual vehicle repairs for this, our fleet, which is actually very aging. The first draft of the new budget for 2025 was discussed in detail. Townwide revenues are currently budgeted at $13 million. Operating costs are just under $12 million, and capital and debt budget, debt budget is about 1.2 million. The committee had preliminary discussions about recommending increase in, to trash fees. The town cost to operate trash service has increased substantially in the past few years, mainly in wages, diesel fuel, and repairs to our trucks. Also, the cost of purchase of replacement trucks has far exceeded, has been increased by almost $80,000 each. That's an increase, not the cost, an increase, each, and the town generally replaces one trash truck per year. We do have nine. Due to these cost increases, our committee may recommend to the council fee increases between 30 and 35 percent. The committee will meet again on February 15th to discuss the second draft of the budget. That's my report.
Does anybody have any comments, questions? Anybody here present have any comments or questions for Mr. Morris? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. The next item on the agenda is a report from the town manager, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council. Pre-COVID, we began a dialogue with the Christian church regarding taking this grass portion of their property here in the southeast corner of their, of their property and converting it into a pay-to-park area that they would allow us to lease from them on a sharing basis of the revenue generated in the parking lot. Pre-COVID, it went away during COVID. Then we've had a set of engineering issues with different firms over the course of the last two years, and now we finally have a plan in hand that we have given to the church that they are going to be reviewing in the next three to four weeks, and I believe will probably be coming back and agreeing to the design, and we'll be able to move forward with creating that parking lot on this property. The parking lot will create seventy-three, seventy to seventy-five additional parking spaces. There'll be a fenced area. It'll be separate from the, the rest of the church property, and we had hoped to have it operational up last summer, but I'm quite sure, though I should never say that, that it will, it will be up for Memorial Day and for this year's parking season. We have lost a substantial amount of snow fence, the snow fence that was placed in front of our replenished beach. This last project did not replenish the entire beach, nor did it do any dune restoration. It was mainly focused on the central portion of the beach, and in the area that was replenished, the snow fence was replaced. The multiple storms now we've had over the last several weeks have taken a good portion of that snow fence down, and you can actually see, especially on the southern end of town, that we're beginning to lose portions of the dune. The snow fence is not a dune saver. The snow fence is there for the accretion of sand as the wind moves back and forth on the beach and catching some of the wave action. It does not, it doesn't dampen the effect of the wave or take any energy out of the wave. Essentially, what happens is our snow fence ends up in Ocean City. We've lost a good bit. We've advised Denrec of that. We hope Denrec comes back and restores the snow fence in the area that was installed during the replenishment, but to date, we have not had any response. I don't imagine they'll be doing anything during the course of the winter and probably will want to wait towards the, close to spring, if not spring itself, when they'll put the fence up in an effort to make sure that people aren't on the existing dune during the course of the summer. We have snow fence in hand and a contractor set to install snow fence on the southern portion of town, and we'll absorb the expense for that. We were able to pick up some excess snow fence from this last replenishment project, and we'll have that installed again late in the spring. We've had a number of complaints in recent years regarding the entrance of the Bethany Diner. Again, one of the things that got lost with our, our morass with engineering firms over the last year or so was a design to help us deal with that. In the interim, we have placed, Public Works has placed collapsible bollards at the entrance, and I would ask those of you that use the entrance or up and down 26, gauge their effectiveness. To date, they're all still there, which is a positive sign, though occasionally people are creative in how they try to get into the diner. But do let me know if you, what you think about their effectiveness there. We are, we have finally again, something again that's been a long time in the pot, if you will, is we're ready to go ahead with installing a flashid, flashing rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Route 1 in Ashwood Street. We had been after Denrec and our engineer for some time to, to meet and to agree on a design for the intersection because the intersection is rather unusual with the, the way the, the actual streets laid out, and the intersection is not just a, a straight east-west design. So that's been approved, and Deldat, which is something they're very good at, has been able to send us the bill for $138,000 for the installation of that, and we'll be proceeding with that in the spring. At the same time they do that, we were asked to take a look at the, the crosswalk here, and Councilman Kiel had asked us to take a look at that, and you would had a constituent speak to you about that, and that there was no button there for you to reactivate the, the crosswalk, right? So Deldat did look at that, and they're going to put a new pole in with a button on it. At the same time, they do the install for the rapid, rapid beacon at Ashwood Street. We're also considering the installation of a beacon at the guard camp at Fifth Street and Route 1 as probably the last beacon we'll probably want to put on Route 1, so we don't end up creating a problem for ourselves with too many that will just be too easy for people to disregard. The last, last on my list here is a big thank you to Julie Malewski for our, our holiday weekend, our holiday happenings. As she does, she's, she grows that. She's expanded it and has different features. She tells us that the pony rides were a big hit this, this year on the beach, and the same company that does ponies is offered to bring camels next year. So. So, part of the holiday spirit, you know, the wise men and the camels. But anyway, so that's something for you all to think about, but a tremendous job. She's, she's doing more and more with it. It's getting its own life, and maybe we'll have to have a committee help her, so. But she's done a fabulous job with it, and kudos to her. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gravier. Any questions? I have one. On that $138,000 for Ashwood, does that include all the work they had to do? That seems a lot for a rapid flashing beacon.
That's the realignment of the intersection, the piano keys, the design work around how they have to configure the intersection to make it safe.
Okay.
The intersection, it's not square, it's offset, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Okay, and I think, I've, I've used that Bethany Diner area, and I think those, the new system there works well. I don't know if anybody else has.
I've been there several times, and I think they're, they're working. It'd be nice to have the final design, but what you put in there is actually functioning very well.
And at the end of the day, if the engineer comes back out and looks at it, he has not had it surveyed, but it, it is on his to-do list, and he's been much more attentive to us than our last company here. That may be just the solution, maybe it was something more formal or substantial there, so.
Yeah, that, that was the only feedback I've gotten. It was really from a community meeting we had, and someone mentioned they'd really rather have the, almost like you see, like a Wawa, the permanent white ballard, or whatever you call it, so. Cliff, can I ask you one other question related to the Collins Kent Wellington pathway? Any update on schedule, start date?
No, Mr. Hinman, but I can assure you that the moment we have an update, that everyone that I can possibly let know, but will know, so.
Does anybody have any, here present have any questions for Mr. Gravier? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, name, address, and ask him, go away, ask him the question.
Or you can ask the council a question, too, so.
It's not really a question, it's just thanking you. I'm, I'm from the southern end of the town, 62 South Atlantic Avenue. I'm Ellen, Ellie Schaper Salins, and we were wondering why the dune fences weren't being put back up on the southern end of town, so I appreciate that you explained that, so thank you very much.
Yeah, we've had some conversations, I think, with some people on South Atlantic, and I hope everyone underst, I hope everyone understands that it was only part of the contract with the Corps, with the vendor that did the work for the Corps. with the Corps, with the vendor that did the work for the Corps, was only to place fence in front of the project area. And we did not want to place the fence that we had purchased there, because by now, again, it would be gone. And it's not really protection, it just is for actually the accretion of sand as it moves up and down the beach, and it doesn't really offer the dune protection. It's more important for us this summer to keep people off of what is left of your dune than, than is, than it is for us to put the fence there now.
Right, that's what we were worried about, keeping people off the dune, and it does build up the sand a little bit, I know not a whole lot, but a little bit.
Yes, only if the waves are just, you know, anything like we're having here, as close as the ocean is to our, our dune line, it's just going to take that fence.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I, can I ask one other question, sort of building off that? Mr. Gravier, with the, a couple of the entrances to the beach from the boardwalk, basically, have been eroded, is there anything going to happen between now and the summer, or is that really, or is that, and Denrec has to do that, right? I mean...
Well, as, my, my standard line for many years is we're not allowed to move a tablespoon of sand on the beach without Denrec's permission or without Denrec doing it. It would be wonderful if Denrec let us, when, when sand was available on the beach, as it is now, you can see deposits, if we were able to doze a little bit, we'd be able to restore some of those crossovers, but we can't. I don't think Denrec will invest the time, energy, and effort, and again, they have all the three communities south of us, and Rehoboth and Dewey, the two communities south of us, Fenwick and South Bethany. I don't think they're going to be working on crossovers, given the fact that we're continuing to see storm after storm after storm. What will eventually happen here is we'll have to close permanently, not permanently, but until we can restore some of that sand, we're going to start having to close some of those crossovers for safety reasons.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gravier. And now we're on to old business.
First item on old business, second reading, discussion, consideration, possible vote to amend Article Nine, Section three-nine-five dash twenty-four of the Bethany Beach Town Code regarding restrictions to the installation of pilings. Mayor Hardeman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caleb. As Mr. Caleb indicated, this is the second reading. The first reading of this ordinance occurred in November of twenty-twenty-three, and since that time, we have not received any public comment, either for or against any, the change to this ordinance. And basically, it's a very simple change, and I think one that's, is needed. As you know, the ordinance prohibits the installation of any type, right now, of any type of pilings between June fifteenth and September thirtieth. And in addition, it also requires that if you're installing pilings after that, you have to note, the contractor has to notify every homeowner within two hundred feet of the installation. That has created some problems that our building inspector noted, because there are some types of pilings that do not have the same vibration or cause the same type of damage as normal pilings do, and it has been basically, she felt that it was not necessary for these homeowners in start, installing the helical pilings and the pilings installed by water, washing, and jetting installation, to have to go to the added expense of notifying everybody because it didn't create the same type of situation. So, based on her experience with this ordinance, she has recommended that we exclude from the requirements of that ordinance, pile types exempt would be helical pilings and pilings installed by washing or jetting installation. And so with that, and the fact that there have been, there has been no pushback from anyone on that, and based on our building inspector's recommendation, I move that we, that we vote today to amend Section three-ninety-five dash twenty-four of the Bethany Beach Town Code regarding these restrictions or exempting from these restrictions those types of pilings and piling methods of installation.
Second.
We have all in favor?
We have to ask for comments.
Any comments?
I'll make one comment. There's a couple of homes that have been, had additions made to them in the last couple of years in our community, and they've used the helical pilings, and they're very satisfied with the, the result from the standpoint of the stability of the addition and so forth, so it seems like they really do a nice job.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item, discussion, consideration, possible vote on an, on, oh, no, we're doing P first. Okay, discussion, consideration, and possible vote on an ambulance service community contributors' agreement, wherein the town of Bethany Beach, the town of South Bethany, and the community of Sea Colony to pay the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Department sixty dollars per taxable parcel for three calendar years commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three, for ambulance services. And it should be noted that Bethany Beach has two thousand nine hundred and twenty parcels, which, which amounts to an annual payment of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Mayor Hardeman?
Thank you. Basically, this is a continuation of the agreement that we had for five years previously that expired December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And as you may know, the Millville Volunteer Fire Company previously provided ambulance service to this fire district, but about fourteen years ago, it became too much for them because of the number of homes over in this area and this fire district, as well as their limitation on manpower. So, the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company volunteered or agreed to pick up that service and to provide ambulance service to this fire district, which runs from the Indian River inlet up down to the Maryland line at Fenwick Island and over to the Assawomen Canal. So, the communities, they go out and they provide, they get the individual homeowners associations to join, the, the volunteer fire company does. We banded together the local towns and Sea Colony Recreation Association to negotiate with the fire company for our towns and the Sea Colony area. So, the agreement, this agreement will be for three years, and it will provide, it'll be for sixty dollars, going up from fifty-three dollars, and of course, there, over the past five years, their costs have increased. The previous agreement was for five years, we decided this one would be for three, to see how things go with them, because there are bills that we're hoping that are before the legislature that will, and studies that will help with the funding of the volunteer fire companies throughout the state, and if at any time something like that happens, then we would be relieved of our obligation to pay sixty dollars a year. What we would do each, what we would do would be, we'd piggyback on whatever they do or whatever the county does. But I don't think that's going to happen for a long time. But anyway, the only thing different about this particular agreement, well, this particular agreement is among the, the three groups, and it just is a continuation of the previous one, it is basically the same terms and conditions in the previous agreement, except for the sixty dollars, and our, the number of homeowners or properties covered in Bethany Beach in the five-year period has increased by a hundred and five, so those are the only changes. So, I move that we approve the ambulance service community contributors' agreement for the next three years.
So moved.
Comments?
Second?
Second.
Nope.
No comments?
Other than how important this is, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
It's not, it's not something that, you know, that's up for, well, should we do this or not, that we have to do it, for the, for the protection of the community and the surrounding communities.
Yeah, in fact, it's kind of low, I mean...
Yeah, I think it's reasonable price, yes.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the next one kind of...
Dovetails.
Mixes in with this one as well. Discussion, consideration, and possible vote on am, on the ambulance service agreement between the town of Bethany Beach, the town of South Bethany, and the community of Sea Colony to join as partners to develop and execute a working agreement with the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Department for provision of the ambulance service. Mayor Hardeman?
Thank you, and essentially, this is the same as the previous agreement we had among us. This one, instead of being with the communities themselves, is, also includes the Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company. And here it notes that over the past fourteen years, the towns together have contributed over four point five million dollars to the volunteer fire company under the terms of the ambulance service agreement. This one is essentially the same, except that it increases the amount to sixty dollars from fifty-three, and it's for three years rather than five, so we can ascertain how the fire company is doing financially after that period of time. And it also points out that this agreement covers property owners and their immediate family members, and tenants and guests are not included in this agreement, they're, they're billed separately by the, by Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company. So, based on all that, we're satisfied with the agreement, the fire company is satisfied, and so I would like to move that we approve the ambulance service agreement between Bethany Beach Volunteer Fire Company, the towns of Bethany Beach, South Bethany, and the Sea Colony Recreational Association.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Comments? No comments? We're here. Comments?
Yeah, Mayor, is there a, because this goes down to this line, is there a reason Fenwick's not in this?
They chose not to be a part of this, they wanted to do negotiating on their own.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, you explained my question, but I just want to clarify it exactly. On page four, number three, the BBBFC, the volunteer fire company, will provide services for the contributors, property owners, and their immediate family members at a zero cost. It will not cost Jerry or his family anything should he have to use their service. Tenants and guests will be billed for services separately. Obviously, they will still get the service, they're just going to have to pay for it.
Right.
So, if someone is renting a property, does, how does that, how does the fire department know, or who knows, they're a renter and not an owner?
We, we provide them.
They'll, they'll, they have a residential list, and that's foable and discoverable, so they have that in hand, it'll be for them to make that determination, but it's not, it won't come back to us.
If my daughter-in-law is staying at my house, she doesn't have, she, well, okay, she does have the same last name. If my son-in-law is there, he doesn't have the same last name.
He'll have to make...
You have to just explain to someone.
Yes.
Okay. And is that change where they're going to bill renters or tenants or guests, is that new in this agreement? So, they haven't been doing that in the past.
No, and they...
Everybody has been no charge.
Well, not everybody.
It's been, everyone's, it's been no charge for everyone.
Yeah, except people like if they're on the beach and they don't live here, you know, when they're taken to the hospital, they're billed.
If the ambulance goes to a residence, there's been no charge.
We've never, this has never been advertised that it, it would include renters.
Renters and guests.
Yes, and the fire company, this was part of the negotiation, they need more money, and so they asked that they could have this for the next three years, let's see how this works.
Well, this was part, this was the end result of a negotiation.
Negotiation, yeah.
The fire company's previous fee had been fifty-three dollars. They came to the, the group, the, the, the towns, if you will, and asked for an increase to eighty. The discussion back and forth was that, that possibly this change would take them where they needed to go financially, in terms of their ability to assess guests and tenants, and that was the, the compromise we made, as, as opposed to going to the eighty-dollar figure.
Is the fee for non-property owners, guests, renters, is that a flat fee? Is it? I don't know what else.
It's whatever your healthcare provider is going to, so they, they have a flat fee the ambulance charges, depending on where you're taken, so.
Right. Is there, how, has there been any thought as to how we're going to make this known to our property owners, or real estate companies, or whomever may be affected or could be affected by this?
You know, actually, the, the fact that it was never advertised before that they were included.
Okay.
People didn't know, people didn't, rent home is based on an ambulance fee. It was not known before, but we could put it out to say that, you know, the terms of the agreement are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Certainly, notice to the rental companies would be a good idea.
Rental companies, they never knew it.
Well, yeah, but...
But I think it's still good, we will put it out, yeah.
They should know it now.
They should know it now, yeah.
And their renters should.
Right.
You know, nobody's going to read the contract, or most people aren't going to read the contract, but it should be in there, I would think, someplace.
I don't know if it has to be a part of the rental agreement.
Well, that's up to them, that's up to them. But it, it should be information that's available to renters.
It should be information that's available, because I don't think at this point in time, from the, from what we've been told by the fire company that, or, and even South Bethany, too, that the rental company is included in the contract, the fact that the ambulance service is included.
In unincorporated areas, you're, you're paying, so this is, this is a, a specific benefit to these communities, I don't know how we would want to make that distinction, and it wasn't made prior to twenty-eighteen when we entered into the first agreement.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I think it could open a bag of worms if you advertise, you know, I mean, the point is, it's something that's all, that's paid for, you know, and so there's really no cost to the, to the person who uses the service, so.
And normally, insurance companies figure it out.
You say it's paid for, but it's paid for, for property owners, or...
Right, right.
The residents, the citizens.
Yes.
But it's not paid for by the renters or guests, etc.
That would be on their own insurance.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really kind of...
I mean, I just think it would be something, and I'm not suggesting we should advertise it, but I think we, there are places that perhaps we should make it known, not the least of which is the rental company. And maybe they already know, I don't know.
But is, I mean, is that a consideration that you're making when you're renting a home at the beach?
No.
Okay. And, and North Bethany, everyone that calls the ambulance is going to pay a fee, so...
That's just my suggestion.
Yeah, well, it's kind of a, you know, a Benny for the town.
Yeah, well, we're paying for it.
We are, right, absolutely, but...
Well, sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars is a year.
Yeah.
A year.
Yeah, but it's still, I was in an accident three years ago, and believe it or not, they charged us, two of us were in the same ambulance, and they charged us thirteen hundred dollars each, so the sixty dollars is well worth the investment.
I'm not arguing that at all.
You couldn't get in the same gurney?
You should have called Newber.
Should have called Newber. I wasn't in this shape to call Newber, unfortunately.
Okay, do we have any more?
Thank you.
Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item of discussion, discussion, consideration, and possible vote on the appointment of Bob Rush to the Budget and Finance Committee, and John Russell to the Stormwater and Flooding Committee. Mayor Hardeman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Caleb. Mr. Morris had asked that Mr. Rush be appointed to the Budget and Finance Committee, and you have a copy of his resume in the materials that were handed out. Mr. Rush has a very impressive background in finance, and he's also took, he's also expressed an interest in serving the town in some way now that he's retired, he's done a lot of work in the community, and he's volunteering his services here, and I think that's wonderful, and we should welcome him. And also, John Russell, to the, Mr. Caleb asked that John Russell be appointed to the Stormwater and Flooding Committee. I would point out that Mr. Russell is not a resident of the town of Bethany Beach, however, our committee guidelines provide that a non-resident with expertise in a certain area related to the committee could be appointed to the committee as a non-voting member, and that's what Mr. Russell will be, and his background is also included. So, I move that we add Bob Rush to the Budget and Finance Committee and John Russell to the Stormwater and Flooding Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Comments? I, I might comment that John Russell, yes, he's, he lives up in North Bethany, in the unincorporated areas. He is a registered surveyor, he is, has a lot of experience in the design of coastal infrastructure, stormwater ponds... Has a lot of experience in the design of coastal infrastructure, stormwater ponds, tidal surveys, this sort of thing. I think he can add a lot of good comments and a good perspective to things we cover in the committee. So, that's one of the reasons why I brought him up to be a member. Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't know Mr. Russell, but I did just want to second Bob Rush's. Bob and I have had a chance just to chat, usually early in the morning when we're walking about, and I think he's going to be a great addition. He's a lot of energy, a lot of perspective and expertise. It's going to be really helpful for us, so, Bob, thank you.
Yeah, I can add to that. Of course, Bob sat down with myself and Janet and went over the existing budget, even though he wasn't on the committee yet. We were meeting yesterday, so we wanted to bring him into the fold, and he asked some very intelligent questions, and participated in the meeting yesterday, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the group. Although, we're going to have three CPAs on the same group, so this could be a problem.
Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Next one.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion, consideration, and vote on a contract submitted by JMT for the North Atlantic Water Main Elimination Engineering Services, a fifty-fifty grant, SRF matching planning grant for eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Gravier.
This agenda item is approving a purchase order for eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars to the engineering firm of JMT to do a design for the replacement of a transite... Existing transite lines in North Pennsylvania Avenue. There's a detailed explanation in your packet that goes into a great deal of detail... Bless you. Goes into a great deal of detail about what this involves. But essentially, there's twenty-five hundred feet of four-inch transite pipe. Transite is an asbestos cement type of pipe that's been used in water services for decades. It's being phased out whenever possible by newer, higher-quality plastic-type pipes. And on North Pennsylvania, North Atlantic Avenue, there already exists an eight-inch plastic line, main line. That eight-inch line is on the west side of the street, and the four-inch transite runs down the north side of the street. There are twenty-eight homes connected currently to the existing transite, and it's probable that many of those homes, many of those connections, are lead connections with not the pipe being lead, but the connector itself being lead. So, we're in the process of eliminating them. If we're to do any type of streetscape work in the future on North Atlantic, and we've had discussions about it, and actually have different sets of plans and different things that we might do for a streetscape scenario on North Atlantic, we would want to make these changes as opposed to repaving the street. So, this is the dollars that it will cost for that design to be done. The replacement of the existing services, the crossover from the four-inch... The decommissioning of the four-inch and the crossover to the eight-inch. Additionally, through Terry Teeman's excellent work, we've been able to pick up a grant from the SRF fund to offset half of these costs. It's a matching grant, up to fifty thousand dollars, so it more than covers the half of this eighty-two... Eighty-two five.
So, we're not off...
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm confused. Are we authorizing eighty-two thousand, or are we authorizing less than that because of the grant?
Well, any contract... Any contract that I sign over forty thousand needs council approval. So, you're approving the eighty-two thousand five hundred dollar contract.
But half of that will be reimbursed.
As I explained, half of that's reimbursed, yes.
That's... Thank you.
If you were CPA, you would know that.
Bob, Bob, can you chime in on it? I just have a... I'm a little bit confused. Is it a four-inch pipe we're trying to get rid of, and a six-inch pipe, or an eight-inch pipe?
It's a four-inch pipe on the north side of the street.
That we're getting rid of.
We're not going to get rid of it, we're just...
No, but we're not going to use it.
We're going to deadline the pipe, and we're going to connect services, new services on those twenty-eight residences to the eight-inch pipe on the west side of the street.
Because in the scope of services, it talks about a six-inch. But is that... Is that wrong? It should be an eight-inch?
If you go to the printout I gave you in your data, this is from the other... What I handed out in my material today.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if JMT and Scope has it wrong, it's an existing eight-inch line.
Okay. There's no six-inch line in this area. It's a four and an eight.
You know, I wouldn't swear to that, so...
Bob, can you help? Okay. I mean, I don't think it makes a difference. It was just confusing to me if we were talking about three different lines or two different lines.
Well, you are CPA, so we understand.
Now, they're picking on me. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone present have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on an ordinance to amend Chapter 516 of the Bethany Beach Town Code by adopting rules mandated by the state of Delaware establishing responsibilities for water cross-connections and preventing backflow. And the council may elect to waive the first reading pursuant to Chapter 45-5 of the Town Code. Mr. Gravier.
I'm asking the council to waive the first reading because it's necessary for us to have this enacted in order to comply with the Department of Health by February 1st. It was left off a previous agenda as we had some personnel changes. So, this is something that's mandated by the Division of Public Health. The worry or the concern with a cross-connection is that there's some kind of a connection within the water system that allows water from an existing type of, say, business... We mentioned dry cleaners here, is somehow pushed back into the water system, and this is a policy that's mandated now by the state that helps prevent that. There's an education component. You have a flyer that in your packet here. We will mail the flyer out, and we'll also make it part of a newsletter, and there's a process for dealing with all this. That's listed in great detail in the ordinance. These ordinances have been enacted through the state, throughout the state of Delaware. This ordinance is patterned a lot after Middle Towns, who was one of the first communities that got really involved with the designing of cross-connection ordinance. It's been reviewed by our solicitor. One of the other components here that we should note is that we have never had an issue with any cross-connection contamination or pushback. And the only... The only problem we might have would be our dry cleaner, which I don't even think is problematic, because they don't dry-clean on premises. So, once this is passed, hopefully, we vote and pass this, we'll make sure that there's no professional dry cleaning with solvents at that particular location. And other than that, this is just something that we're doing as a matter of process to be part of whatever bureaucracy we need to be a part of, so...
Okay. I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
And to move it also with one reading, with just this reading?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
So, as you talk about it, you speak to the bureaucracy, but it is a very good proactive measure.
Well, when you talk to our water department, there's a concern that it's a layer of protection that many communities don't need. So, and it's nothing that we need or have any necessary protection from, so...
We really don't have many industrial kind of settings, like, other than that, the dry cleaning situation.
And many other communities are similarly affected with no real need for this type of protection, so...
That's what I'm saying, bureaucracy. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, anybody else on council? Mr. Boswell, did you want to say something?
Yes. My previous life, thirty-some years ago, we passed cross-connection backflow prevention codes in the Washington metropolitan area. It's not just commercial. It's residential. As far as knowing whether you have one, you do have them all the time. They just don't create a major problem. Dry cleaning is a big problem. There's no question about that. But any restaurant is a problem. Any restaurant. Any... In your own house, there's a problem. That's why you see the faucet doesn't go into the sink, because if it did, or if somebody puts a hose on it, which they tend to do on laundry things, you can back siphon with a negative pressure. You can back siphon that contaminated water back into the site. So, my question would be, is this going to be a requirement for all existing structures to be evaluated? I know it's a plumbing thing, so we really don't do that, but the water companies are responsible for the quality of the water. Is that going to be grandfathered, or is it going to be a retroactive health regulation that the town is going to ensure that all the... Especially the commercial properties are in accordance... Following the... Whatever the state requirements are?
There is... There's nothing in here that changes what we do currently. All new installs will meet the same criteria all of our other installs do. We're not going to be conducting any other reviews of any other businesses per what's in this particular piece of code.
My recommendation to the town is that if you're going to do this, which I think should be done, I agree with you, you probably ought to mandate that all... At least commercial, all commercial structures be evaluated. And they do have... Master plumbers can do this, as well as certified cross-connection control mechanics who are normally German plumbers. But I would suggest that, especially the owner ones, there are a lot of problems.
This, as I read it, this applies to every property in the town.
Yes, yeah.
And it allows... It allows the town to enter any property that it suspects that this is on, and to search for, and to look for it, and there are fines involved and penalties.
Right, well, if you're going to... If you pass it and you're going to do it, you probably ought to do it.
Yeah.
If you just pass it and say, all right, we met the requirement of the Health Department, that sounds good, but if in fact you do get a cross-connection, then you can...
Right.
People get sick really easy for this. Swimming pools are another big area. I think the town should consider what they're going to do as far as enforcement is concerned, because enforcement's the important thing. And who should enforce it? I don't think the... I think you can have, at least on a commercial, you can require that... I think you could probably require the commercial establishment to show what their cross-connection protection programs are, backflow preventers, or whatever you're using. As far as the other residential, more than likely, the plumbing codes that have been followed recently cover most of that stuff. But the commercial stuff have... They're called reduced-pressure backflow preventers, and they're like two valves. There's a drain in between. Those things have to be maintained on an annual basis, or they don't work after a while. So, when you're getting into this thing, I normally don't put my two cents in on things like this, but I happen to know a little bit about it, and it's something that you really should consider in addition to passing your new code. Thank you.
I think there's a brochure going out, too, isn't there, to everybody?
Yes, there's a brochure going out. And when our water department brought this to us with... We asked those same questions about what we should be concerned about, and their review of our system and what we do and how we've done it just brought the only... The only issue they raised was the issue of the dry cleaner. We'll certainly ask them if there's a need to conduct other inspections or to be more involved with this, but on its face, their initial concern was the dry cleaner.
But good suggestions. Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
But other than a new installation, how would we know that there is cross-contamination? I mean, you're going to go into every restaurant and check it? I mean, what precipitates the fact that they've got... Other than the fact that all of a sudden people are getting sick?
You actually have to go in. You have to evaluate the system, the water system. You see what devices they have. And I mean, it's very specific, as to what plumbing devices have to have backflow or cross...
This is under standard codes? This would be available? This is something that they would have to do?
The code should have it... Yeah, the code should have it in, and as I said, all the plumbers know, because that's part of the requirements as far as installation. If you... In a lot... In larger areas, metropolitan areas like Washington DC and things like that, or Philadelphia, or whatever, they do have certified cross-connection control technicians, who in most cases are at least German plumbers, and they actually... That's what they do. They're trained to do that and go through it. If you have plumbing inspectors, plumbing inspectors know how to do this. So, it's not something an engineer necessarily would do unless they were involved in a particular aspect of, say, a plumbing engineer would know. But, you know, a normal PE who's not in the civil engineering area probably would not be trained in that.
I guess what I'm asking from the town standpoint is that...
From the town standpoint, if you look at the ordinance, and this is an ordinance that's designed to identify and deal with high hazards. And as a matter of fact, in the second page of the ordinance, it identifies the high hazards.
I read that part of it.
Mr. Boswell's exactly right. Pools can push back. Irrigation systems can push back, but to date, it's not been problematic, and it's not something the state is regulating at that point. What they are looking at are high-hazard issues.
A good example would be if you drilled a well for a sprinkler system, you're not allowed to connect that to anybody else's system, like our system. You couldn't do it. But that's a potential cross-connection. And the definition of cross-connection is a connection that crosses into the potable water supply. Backflow's different, but the same thing. Backflow is when you actually have a drop in your pressure in the water system, say, our water system, and it sucks.
Sucks it in the other side.
You know, if you drop a hose... If you have a hose bib that doesn't have a vacuum breaker on it, which is a little device, and your hose is sitting in muddy water, or you're spraying the window stuff that cleans houses and windows, or you're spraying your grass, with that little device, that's a cross-connection. More than likely, if you have a little backflow, in other words, say, somebody's washing dishes, washing clothes, and somebody's like spraying the grass, there's a good chance there'll be a negative flow inside the house. Could take that chemical you're spraying on, bringing into the house water supply. And now, necessarily, it wouldn't... There probably wouldn't be enough to go to the house next door, but you'd, you know, you'd have a problem with your own supply. And once some of that stuff goes in, you can't get that right away. It just doesn't wash that, so... I don't mean to...
Sure. To clarify this, and maybe to put everyone's mind to rest, again, the ordinance is tailored premises types that are deemed by the town of Bethany Beach in this ordinance to represent a high hazard to the public water system, Bethany Beach's water system. And where this ordinance is designed to worry about cross-connection list agricultural facilities, beverage bottling plants, car washes, chemical plants, dry cleaners, film processing plants, food processing plants, laboratories, medical facilities, metal plating industries, mortuaries, petroleum processors, storage plants, piers, marinas, docks, water from facilities, radioactive material processing plants, and wastewater treatment facilities. It's not a cross-connection ordinance or preventative to deal with things that you would normally see in your home or within commercial entities like restaurants.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration and possible vote to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to Twenty-nine Delaware Code 10004B9. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, everyone who came, who braved the elements to come today, and also anyone on the...
Michael, thank you.
Who watched virtually. Thank you.